Really appreciate.
Yeah.
And we're in your house.
I'll admit, I didn't know about it, but nice job, Daniel.
Uh, we are good to go. Let me see my recording. Okay. Alright, so there's your agenda.
Great.
So we are free to launch.
Right. We'll call the meeting to order. Do we do a self roll call or will you call?
I'll call out.
Okay, great. Thanks, Daniel.
Um, just want to make sure that it is recording. Maybe it's going to kill me.
A little red lights on a bit, it looks like.
Oh, okay, good, good, good. Uh, Mike Abate is not here. Jim Bauer.
Here.
Jane Griggs.
Here.
Chris Hoy.
Here.
Jan Colway.
Yes, here.
Jeremy Miller.
Here.
Michael Slater. Is not here. Looks like we have a. So just for everybody's information, Michael Slater. Make sure that. This is so hard to do on a little screen.
Scoob in a little bit, Daniel.
Yeah.
I think if you hold the alt key down and then scroll, it's probably up there.
Ooh, look at that. Didn't even know about that. Satisfying. Special effects.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty cool.
Okay. So, uh, Michael is, uh, has replaced Jane as our Salem Planning Commissioner designee. Just for everybody's knowledge, and so he would have been his first meeting, but I think he might have conflict. But if he was here, I, he would introduce himself, so. So the purpose of this meeting today is to kind of continue on this path, this work plan. Let me just stop sharing and people can see me for the sake of the video. I don't know, it's not working, is it? Okay, so, uh, the purpose of the meeting, uh, this today is we've, we started a lot of work. We went through and we completed a work, but we kind of stopped at certain point. So the last week convened was, uh, in developing the charter, revised charter. We had a subcommittee group that we worked with to, uh, do that, include the mayor, uh, Jim, Jane, and, uh, based on that, um. Okay. Oh, it's transcribing. That's what that is. Sorry. I'm just, all these little things with this. So. Essentially, what we're going to do is we're going to kind of review and approve that, um, if there's any modifications, but, uh, and then we'll, uh, go from there, but, um. Let me bring up this charter. It's gonna be. Okay, so this is, already see this? Okay. So if you recall, uh, we made, uh, changes to the administrative rules and updated those administrative rules that, sort of examined and, uh, the procedures that agencies would use to submit proposals to the commission as well as, sort of the protocols for developing, uh, area plans and adopting those. And we went through the rulemaking process, adopted those administrative rules, um, and they were, by doing so, that made our charter sort of out of alignment. So this was an effort to align the charter with the language in the statute and the administrative rules, um, and provide, really for, this is the commission's sort of, uh, guide for how it performs its actions and it's, uh, kind of a, your reference for what your authority is. So I don't know if people had a chance to review this. We had sent it a couple of times because we, the last meeting, we, we had to postpone and I sent it out for that. So I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review, um, but I will.
Mr. Chair, do you have a preference for how to, how to move through this?
I think we can just, I think, I think maybe just general comments if there are any, otherwise if we want to go through it, any paragraph by paragraph, um, that would be great too. So everybody has a chance to weigh in.
I have one comment.
Yes.
What one comment? And it's either got to change in one spot or the other, but on the first paragraph, we're talking about, uh, capital area, fifth line down, capital area within the boundaries of the city of Salem. And on the back, the second bullet at the bottom, it refers to all state agencies located within the boundaries of the city of Salem and Kaiser. So we, I know we had that discussion at our last meeting, but we need to be consistent. It's got to be one or the other, but the same in both locations, I think.
What a great point, Jane.
Every once in a while, you know?
So, uh, I will emphasize this, as I have previously in the past, there's kind of a text related issues that are in the statute. And, um, so I, I basically, the charter and the rule kind of adopts what is in the statute as a description, uh, and we use that, as we've discussed, as sort of our, our boundary. But yeah, there is this discrepancy, but, um, it's. The discrepancy is also in the statute. And so without cleaning that up, um, this charter actually pulls the language from both the statute and the rule. Um, if you feel that it's, it, I mean, my, my inclination is to mirror the language, so there's no, uh, conflict or there's no, uh, interpretation issues between the two, even if one is, is wrong.
Clarify this, city of Salem.
It also references Kaiser.
Oh, it does.
In one, one small part of it. And this was when I did my research into the legislative, uh, process for this, why, I think it's sort of a vestigial thing, but, uh, it's there. We don't have any buildings in Kaiser, uh, and it really never really made sense to me, but because they're at late, that language is in there. I've left it unless you feel that.
With the statute overrule the rules, I mean, the rules are just telling agencies how to do what the statute says they should do. So is it unclear? Is it, um, conflicting language in the statute or is it just conflicting language between the two entities? You're muted. I can't hear you.
Only because of the conversations that we had, but it, it does leave it somewhat ambiguous, but that's partially what we do, so.
Important thing is that, uh, projects that occur within area plans within the city of Salem are subject to.
I can't hear you. Yeah, you're, you're cutting out, Daniel. I'm not sure.
I think that it's just an issue where they think of. Can you hear me?
You were saying that you had poor network quality, Jane, a minute ago.
Yeah.
You froze up on our, your video is totally frozen on our end.
My video is frozen. That's great. Yeah, and I can hear just part of what, um, Daniel's saying. That's okay. You just guys keep.
Maybe turn off your camera and see if that frees up your bandwidth.
Let me just see.
Yeah, this, uh, I don't know.
Okay, is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, your sound quality is perfect now.
Okay, you don't need to see me because I look like shit anyway. So this is perfect.
Cut that out, by the way. I think part of the problem is there's, there's a different interpretation of what the capital is. So in the statute, there's references to the capital area and there is the Capitol Mall, which some people consider the capital. There's the capital area, which some people consider coterminous with the, the city of Salem. And then there's language that says the capital area is effectively Salem Kaiser. And we have, uh, deliberated that that is within the urban growth boundary in the city limits of, well, it's really within the city limits of the city of Salem, uh, but it's just this little Kaiser thing. Wait, I don't know where to stick it and whether or not it's meaningful to stick, but by and large, uh, everything we do is within Salem because all the area plans are within the city of Salem, so.
But the committee is really all around Salem. I mean, there's nothing, we don't have any planning commissioners from Kaiser.
Nope.
Air.
No.
So it's.
But you could.
It's kind of a, this, this.
You could have a Kaiser.
You, you, you could.
Sure.
Uh, we don't have anything that's organized by what the required membership is, uh, other than somebody has to at least represent Marion County, if not, if they don't live in, uh, Salem. Um, but we, that's the only other thing is. So I'm not sure how to reconcile all that, other than consider it this, uh, you know, I guess artifact of, uh, how this, the statute was kind of cobbled together at the time and then the, when I inherited doing the rule update that kind of makes sense of it all.
Well, I.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion. Could you, um, so if the future CPC commissioners don't think like we're dorks and we didn't catch this, can you footnote the charter just with the reason why it's, um, not consistent in, in both references? Just so the.
Okay, so.
The next Daniels know why it's written that way.
That's, that's a good suggestion that, which would be that, you know, the, the, the commission has the authority to develop and interpret its administrative rules, which you've done, and in your interpretation, you've,
At this time.
At this time, have determined that, um, what constitutes the capital area for the purposes of plan review, uh, is an area coterminous with the city boundary of Salem. Um, even though it references, uh, Kaiser, it's not relevant at the time.
Guessing that this was all developed either around the time Kaiser was incorporating or just before, or maybe during the process, because, you know, it's not very, not a very old city. So I'm thinking that that's why it's maybe got, got some mixed messages in the statute.
Yeah, I, I think it's just how the, the statute was like in existence, then it was removed and then put back. Something got left and it's, didn't necessarily get scrutinized enough where, um, I mean, I could probably do that to a lot of statutes. Uh, there's language in there. It's like, what is this about? So, um, it is within your authority though to, uh, you know, state what, uh, you know, the review process is and what it constitutes. And I think if you're saying that it applies to the city of Salem, I'm cool with that.
I like the idea of, of, you know, and just kind of explanation on why we're doing this. Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay.
Does that settle up for you, Shane?
Yep, that's good for me.
Okay. Then, yeah, it gets into the, the membership, which is, uh, consistent with, uh, mostly how we have operated, but it was not, uh, accurately represented in the charter. Responsibilities, um, are a little bit more succinct. And so the commission knows exactly what it is charged with doing, which is, um, reviewing and, and adopting and planning plans, gauging in studies, uh, and then the area plan and the project reviews. Um, so again, this comes out of the, the rules and the statute, but it's, it's just sort of synthesized down where it's a, it's a nice reference, uh, document for the, the commission as they're doing their work. Um, I think what was missing before was, uh, very succinct, uh, kind of, uh, display of what your actions are. This is always something that, um, I would be asked during the meeting. So these are your options for how, uh, what your actions are in regards to a project or plan review. Um, so it would be one of those. Um, and of course, the quorum. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to make sure we go back over this one another time. The, we are reviewing the plans, but we can't necessarily prescriptively call for the plans to be updated. We can't say you're up, you need to update them by end of third quarter 25.
Uh, technically you are, have the authority to request that a plan be updated. It's up to the agencies to do the planning and, uh, as long as they comply with the criteria of the plan development guidelines or whatever. But you, you can, uh, that is authority.
We talked about that being pretty complicated because if, if there's a cost incurred to do that, if they don't have the final, basically the ability to do that, it's a kind of a, it, it, it's not a very effective way to do this. I'm just trying to make sure we, I mean, because the next thing we're going to do is go do our work. And we've kind of agreed to who the first up is, right?
Well, informally, yes.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, there, we intentionally added, if you recall, uh, this has been a while.
Yeah.
Maybe I, just because I've been in the weeds a little bit more at this, that it's a little more fresh, but we did add, add some sort of hardship provisions, or at least that DAS has the authority to kind of say, well, um, this is scheduled to be updated according to the, the commission, uh, that they would like to see, but there's extenuating circumstances that, uh, prevent that. So DAS can say, well, we'll postpone or something like that.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I was making, made sure that we added those in there to, um, for circumstances where that's not, um, feasible for an agency or, uh, to do, or not practical, you know? We're in a major recession. Nobody has any.
Money.
Money, yeah, so, um.
I'm mostly just illuminating it for the record because it, once we go, it's, we're kind of into that.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, uh, a schedule is good. Uh, yeah, it's not, the schedule itself is not a matter of, uh, rule or statute. It's just, uh, uh, a guideline for how, I mean, the rule, we said like six years and there's, there's a timeline, but again, we, we added the language that is the escape clause if necessary. Um, but I think that's fair and good. Um, but I don't think we're overly boxed in by the requirements per se. That's just my interpretation of, since I, I crafted the language, I think that that's how I kind of, my takeaway of what we came up with.
It's, so. Just want to.
The intent is to keep things on track to the extent feasible, uh, to prevent the these plans becoming so far out of date that they're irrelevant. Um, but in many cases, uh, you know, the, the plan updates consist of, but there's a couple of levels. There's like a superficial plan update, like I need to, I remove this building. And so it's really just a, a matter of adjusting the map. That's a, that's a simple change. Or I want to build a whole new thing and that's a bigger thing, or I want to reorient this entire campus. That's a much bigger effort. So we, we created those kind of levels within the planned development process that, uh, sort of corresponds to the level of effort and planning that, that would, is necessary. So, um, you know, we try to make it where the commission isn't necessarily burdened by, uh, kind of small, uh, requests or types of projects that were, uh, not super meaningful to in relationship to the plans, you know, goals or the development policies. It's just like, I guess it kind of fits, so we should review it, but it's actually like fence screening. And it's like, we kind of, uh, eliminated that as a requirement because it's.
Well, we put a million dollar threshold.
Yeah, I get, when there's a million dollar threshold, there's also this kind of major minor, uh, project thing. So, um, so also, um, you know, language about the subcommittees, we've already utilized a subcommittee, um, but it can be used for any purpose, just as long as we loop back to the rest of the group for, as is customary. And then, uh, this trimmed a lot, but it, it basically condensed it down to say, yeah, DAS handles all this stuff. So and there are , uh, commission officers, chair and vice chair, uh, and the terms, and then just the requirements, which I added were for, if you're going to be on the CPC, you kind of have a base of expectation. Uh, one that you, you know, you kind of uphold their, your oath, um, and the policies. You got to do your workday trainings, um, regardless, uh.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
You'll get sent that email.
I've locked out right now and I'm a little nervous. What's going on?
Just for the record, I just want to say I don't admin username and passwords. That's all of our day people, so.
Learned that.
Uh, I can't, I can't triage that one. Um, and then, you know, they, you commit to meeting when you say you're going to come and, um, that we acknowledge the public. Though very few members actually show up, so we'll see how that changes over time. Get more work going here. Um, so that's the charter. So you tell me how you want to approach this because what happened was we met as a subcommittee. Uh, we did this sort of preliminary work of like evaluating the text. And then we had a little bit of trouble meeting again, so I just like plowed through and then, uh, I was going to use the last meeting as the next kind of like ru- review and, and edit that we, uh, didn't have that opportunity. So, uh, you tell me what you would like to do. Would you like to like approve this with the amended footnote addition? Or would you like to review this and come back and vote at the next meeting?
Hold on one second, Jane. I just wanted to get, um, Jan's input because he's the only person who wasn't on this subcommittee, so I just wanted to get your reaction if you had any.
Um, well, I do have some suggestions, but I'll wait till we figure out how we approach those.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we have some suggested edits, so let's go through and do those.
Okay, so do we want to do them?
You know, after a motion. Right?
Well, I, I don't know if it's a procedurally or we just.
You could do it before the motion, then we don't have to amend it. So I'll withdraw my motion. And then maybe he does it and then we don't have to do the whole men thing and.
Well, I guess I, I need some, uh, some scale here. Are we talking about like a couple of text changes or are we talking about, let's deliberate this?
No, 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 and, uh, mostly grammar, actually.
Typo.
Love these.
Love that.
Political audit of my grammar.
Yes, put Daniel on front.
This is public education.
I hope he made some spelling errors too. That would be really fun.
Okay, let's just go through and.
Let me, uh, uh, I guess I need to, uh, let me bring up my. Editable documents. All right, I'll just edit this.
And you don't have to do like life editing.
Well, I mean, if we're trying to, if we want to approve it at the end of the process.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Okay, because I, I, I just have some general.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. Um, titles should always be capitalized. Like the governor, governor's always capitalized, mayor should always be capitalized. There's a couple of places where it isn't. Maybe you can use the search functional, bring up all the instances of the word mayor, and then you can verify which one is capitalized, which one isn't. Um, same with city of, city of Salem should always be capitalized, city of Salem, city should be capitalized.
But.
It's on and off throughout the document. It's not.
This is APA style, so.
That.
APA style.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The only capital, capitalize it if it's with the name. So Governor Kitzhoffer, for example, you would capitalize.
Yeah, I, 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 uh.
I use consistency, one or the other, not both in one document. We can pick whichever one we want, but it should be consistent.
I would say if you're referring to, if it's usually as a title, like Governor Kitzhoffer would be capitalized, you were just saying the governor's.
Yeah, I think.
We.
Shift to the city, it's, it's the city as a city versus the city as a government entity.
But like in the very first paragraph, it's capitalized in the first sentence and then the second sentence it is not. And so I'm saying one or the other.
Okay.
And then consistently throughout the document. That's my suggestion. Whether we go with a P style or Chicago, I, I don't have a preference.
Gotcha. Um.
And, and, and same with capitalizing the mayor, either always capitalizing or not at all.
I agree.
But if the governor's capitalized without name, maybe the mayor should be capitalized.
Just like if we're going to capitalize state of Oregon, state and capitalize state, we are.
And administrators capitalized, governors capitalized, so maybe mayor should be capitalized too.
Okay. I will address this. Um, let's, um.
So it's actually correct in the first paragraph to have it both ways, isn't it?
Well, it, the city, I think that the first sentence, maybe I didn't catch that because so it's the, the city of Salem as an entity is capitalized, the city of, the city of Salem as a thing. Um, a non-proper thing.
Right.
Uh, I don't know, I think this is something where, uh, let me do some, some work on this and we can bring it back to the next time was a.
Great. I don't want to spend.
Yeah.
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 First thing out the capitalization.
Yeah.
And, and the other suggestion I had is, um, I'd love to have some page numbers on there. It makes it easier when you print it to see which order it comes in. And then the spacing at the end of a sentence. Sometimes there's one space, sometimes there's two, and somehow there's three before the next sentence starts.
Well, I think that's just the automatic, isn't it?
It's a.
No, I think proper is to have just one space. The old typewriters, we used to do two.
No, I understand, but when you, when you're just, when you're doing right and less justifying, it's going to spread it out and make it.
I, I know, but I believe there are multiple spaces in there.
Great.
I know it does. It stretches out over the line.
Okay, uh, I'll examine that. It's all based on a, a style template, so.
It's not, it's not a big deal, but I thought.
But I, I guess I was.
It's up on the website.
Is there like something related to the content that changes the meaning of any of the language?
No, there, there's on one sentence, um, in the paragraph first page, just above the word membership. It says cities of Salem.
Probably.
Yeah, it's the second, second line of that paragraph. I think it, it used to say maybe Kaiser, that was removed or.
Yeah, probably. Okay.
And that paragraph right above membership.
Good catch.
The second line there.
We are right there.
Yeah. Okay.
But, and no, no concerns for the content. I know that comes straight from the statute.
Okay.
So I'll withhold my motion until next meeting. Is that what you'd rather do, guys?
Well, um, motion, yes, because we're, I think, um, to ensure that it meets everybody's satisfaction, I'm going to clean it up a little bit more. I think that, um, I'm, I'm, we're sort of focused on the, the, the meaning, the content, make sure that that's adequate. Um, but it doesn't sound like you have anything related to.
Not, not the content.
Procedures or the, okay.
The appearance.
Okay, the appearance, alright.
And, and then, and the, the last page, governor appointed, point is capitalized, but unlegislatively appointed, it's not capitalized. Some, um, it's under member terms. Last, last page paragraph, member terms. It says governor appointed. I think a point should probably be a lowercase a.
I think it's because it's the beginning of a sentence.
Well, but then the next sentence is legislatively appointed and then appointed is a lowercase a. I think the G should be capital and the A should not be.
Okay, and we should never, uh, type the name after. That's a rule.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, I will, I will address those. What's that?
You did a great job. I think you did a great job putting together the documents.
Oh, yeah.
That's true.
All right, uh, I love like grammar and spelling mistakes during a public meeting, so yeah, makes me feel great. Cut me down to size, guys.
That's why I was excited about it. It was going to be good.
Jim. Jim. Okay, so I guess, uh, where we're at is we need another review and another, uh, approval next meeting.
Yeah, an actual approval next meeting. If anybody else has anything more suggested edits, I would, I would get them today.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think it sounds like in terms of content, everybody's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there was something that we needed to discuss content wise, where it changes perspectives or something like that, um, that's something where we need to deliberate that, but if it just has like a, a, you caught a misspelling, you can just email that to me and I'll incorporate that into the final draft. Okay, so I, I'm, I'm good with that and moving on. So.
Outstanding work.
Good job, Dana.
Yeah.
So I just want to, uh, can you see this? So I just want to reacquaint you with our little slide deck here, which was like, here's this work plan that we've been doing. We, we did the rulemaking, we did the, we just updated a draft charter. And then I updated the statewide facility planning manual, which is right here. So this is what agencies use and receive to use to, uh, complete their, uh, agency facility plans for CPAB review and for project reviews with the Capitol Planning Commission. What wasn't before, uh, did include all of the capillary project review specifics that we've been working on this whole time, which they are now listed in this manual. Um, so they're clear, straightforward, uh, and, um, they hopefully are, are kind of easy for people to, uh, agencies to use to comply. It doesn't, now this is about the area or the agency facility plan isn't related to the area plan development, which are a whole separate set of things that we need to discuss at some point. I think what's, what's different is, I think where I heard from agencies and from the commission, um, since I took over was this process is not necessarily clear. And then I get like emails and phone calls about, does this, uh, meet or need to be reviewed? What's the process here? So, uh, I did, I created this little app that it basically is a self-guided survey app that allows you to determine if, and we don't need to go through it, but basically, uh, it creates a project record uh, with all the specifics. And then by virtue of answering the questions, it determines the level of review. So determines it's in this area plan. And then you have a new set of things you have to comply with, you upload your plan documents, you upload a statement of the, the project purpose and need and specifics and so if it's, you know, to, you know, meets all these things, it just keeps on going. And it has all references to, um, the administrative rules. Just so it's, people aren't digging for guidance on how to comply with this, so. Um, I don't know if it's going to be useful, but the whole point was to provide uh, kind of a, a very transparent, easy to navigate pathway for agencies to know what projects need to be reviewed, uh, and what level that they need to be reviewed at. And so they can plan for it and then, you know, we, we have that information ahead of time.
Has anybody tried it out yet?
I haven't had any users yet, uh.
That'll be, I mean, it sounds great, I'll be excited to hear what, and how user, what their experiences, if it was helpful, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll test it out, I mean, I'm all for like, uh, trying different things, but I'm, I'm just trying to, to imagine if I was on the other end of this. I like some sort of easy, the easy button to like, uh, so I, I thought like, like TurboTax, you know? It's like, it kind of guides you through it and you, so that was my approach and so it, you know, it just depending on what you answer, you know, it just creates a whole thing, but it's all based on, and it gets loaded into an Excel, uh, spreadsheet in the backend and you can export it and it's got all the location information, map stuff. So it accomplishes a lot in terms of collecting information, uh, that we can use to basically give to the commission ahead of time as a proposal. Whereas before, our intake form was like this little word document that I ended up just not using because it was so unhelpful, I guess. So that's where we're at in terms of, uh, this work plan. We have the, the rules, the charter, almost say 95%. Statewide facility planning process manual, complete. Agencies are using it now because they're preparing their stuff for the budget process and then, and the, the project plan review application materials, those are all sort of embedded in that application, that web app. So that leads us to what's next on the list. Um, as Sir Jim alluded to, we can use, need to start thinking about, uh, updating these area plans at some point and what is the process to do that? And I think in typical kind of planner speak, we need, need a, a, a plan for a plan. In essence, we need to figure out the process that's going to get us to what the process will be and, um, that is kind of open discussion at this point, but I think we've, um, been thinking about it a little bit and there's a, a few approaches that we could do. And I've been talking to Jeremy, who's, uh, my manager, about what would be a sensible approach, but I think it's important to hear what the commission thinks about sort of the, what is reasonable in terms of, uh, the process and the expectations? And then how we can kind of manage those in terms of what is within our capacity to execute, uh, given, what we are having to deal with in terms of just workloads and then, um, you know, the, the extent that we involve the commission in that and versus what is something that the agencies and contractors would do, there's sort of a line. So.
Take this in thoughts on that, I think.
I've got some.
Sure.
Um, given that it, it would be my belief that we'll be spending seconds on the approval next time we meet of the work you've already done. And we'd have time in that meeting. One thing would, I think, to go back to kind of, if nothing else, maybe like an age study of what, where the plans are, it's like, like a map that shows, you know, that we would kind of walk through that, like, okay, this one is, is 35 years out of alignment, this one is. But, you know, go through it as, in a meeting and kind of, at least in some way of due diligence, be able to say at that meeting, we went through the inventory of the plans. We now, again, are, because it's been like two years, I think, since we've done that.
Well, I had, I have noted on here, uh, what plans are in effect, what their, the year, last year they were adopted, that, uh, represented agencies and the, the thought is on our end is we need an approach for how plans get developed, so agencies can follow that. And whether or not that happens as part of a contract vehicle for, uh, you know, a master contract for, uh, you know, a planning firm to do that and agencies can take advantage, or we simply provide the guidelines that, um, they must comply with. That's, I think, a, a matter of, uh, you know, group debate, I mean, I think that the contract thing is, is more sensible. Um, but I think it's where we start and there's a couple of things. If you look at, we have a a coordination plan that is required and the coordination plan is sort of the plan of how these other areas interact with each other and their, their impact on the city itself and how they relate to each other. That coordination plan is, um, not very effective, I, I didn't even reference it, it's, it's not very well produced. So I think there's that, that is one thing that needs to be done, but there's also this Capitol Mall master plan, which is the most severely out of date. And.
And our view of me the most important.
Yeah, so I think that there's this, maybe, I don't want to say competing ideas, but maybe they're, uh, something that, um, happen, uh, in tandem or they happen sequentially, it doesn't matter. But I think if we use one area, uh, maybe that's our test ground for, uh, or our test subject, I guess, for filling out what are these, uh, plan guidelines and, and methods for agencies to use, but we're having, we're, we're using one of the areas, uh, that need an update as sort of the.
Starter.
Starter, and I think I think consensus is that the Capitol Mall, um, is the one that's most egregiously out of date and has the most amount of kind of gravity to it.
But you're saying, I'm, because that's what I thought we would be talking about, but you're saying that also the coordination plan.
They're different things, so I think that you have to think about the coordination plan is, it is this relationship between, uh, all these different areas and the city. And if you remember how we kind of defined what, I have to say define, but I guess reemphasize what the, the purpose of the commission was, is, is this, um, relationship between the state and the city. And so in sharing and collaborating on, uh, sort of goals and, and having a forum for, um, you know, kind of like, uh, you know, discussing what are, you know, mutually beneficial outcome, all those kinds of things. So in that context, maybe you look at what are area plans' relationship to, uh, the transportation system? Uh, and the current TSP that, uh, is, I don't even know where the, the status of that is right now.
Just launching the, the TSP update.
Yeah, so that, how do our area plans relate to that in terms of the loading of those, uh, transportation system? You know, and managing that? And the problem is you ideally want to have that stuff before you engage your TSP, because then you would know your, your demand, but, um, we're a little out of sync, but I think part of the coordination plan may be as a way to look at state government as a total within the, the Capitol, the city of Salem and its sort of, uh, opportunities, constraints, uh, advantages, disadvantages that, and what are the, the either policy or, um, sort of planning opportunities that, you know, we could, I guess, I don't know, formalize in terms of a relationship between the city, so we're all working like, there's been a lot of zone changes, uh, in the city. Opinions Plan and overlay zones, all of those have been updated since, a long time since that coordination plan.
Yeah, we regret all of that.
So, uh, I think having a formal understanding about the relationship between, um, the edges of state government to the edges of the city. Meaning, uh, to think about state government as campus, um, the relationship between the, where the campus ends and the city begins, there's always this sort of zone of integration, right? So, uh, yeah, I think a while back, Mayor Bennett was, uh, when he was the chair, uh, there was some issue about, uh, zone changes related to areas around the Capitol Mall and corporate retail and he was very, I think that as opposed to that being a part of a, the meeting as a, a discourse, that it is something that is agreed upon in terms of policy or, or, um, approach, uh, amongst eight and the city that is uh, sort of manifested in that plan. It's, 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 it's the, how we relate in a way. That's kind of how I'm, I'm viewing it on some level, there's not a lot in terms of what the requirements are for this coordination plan, other than it's how the area plans, uh, sort of function together within the city and the, but the, the potential burden is on the city and um, how they relate to things like zoning.
So.
All that stuff.
For our next meeting, would it be appropriate to take the first and the second one on there, because those are the two contenders, and decide whether it's and/or, or? Is that, can that be done, I mean?
I mean, I tell you a little about what my thought was on it, but I mean, I'm, I'm just like, you know, it's kind of a straw man thing here is, but I think a coordination plan could be something that, um, is something that's worked on between us and city staff, because it relates to like, um, land use, things like that. And maybe there's some aspect of this that can be worked on simultaneously as we maybe contract with, uh, a, a firm to help do the Capitol master plan where you're stakeholders in that process. And they're kind of driving the technical analysis and the design aspects and we're kind of synthesizing what are the policy, resulting policy, policies that, uh, would be, uh, in the plan. Or, you know, if it's a 20-year plan or something like, or six-year plan, I guess, but, um, so those are just ideas, I'm, I'm just, I'm just proposing ideas simply because I'm just trying to get something on the board in terms of progress here.
Thoughts?
I think if we could just toss up a way in which we could do an action item at the next meeting that pushes us one direction, whatever prep we need to do to push ourselves, whether it's an and/or, we're going to go do that. The way you described this, it might be, there may be a bunch of hoops that we have to go through to do what you just described. Can, who could, how can we hire a consultant or is there the authority of the finances to do that, right?
Basically, DAS would do all this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but.
Coordinate, agencies would be.
And they'd report back progress or whatever, is that?
Yeah, we would basically coordinate and manage, I think, the, oversee the contract. Uh, the contractors would work with the agencies and develop the plans, we set the criteria. But there's this substantive components of what goes into those plans. I think that, um, the commission, uh, would, uh, need to provide some insight on, it's like what.
So have you and Jeremy felt that their money would be there to do that if, if that was the direction we had it?
Jeremy's got his hand raised.
Yeah, Jeremy, I, I can't see my thing, so just try and.
I'm trying to just gracefully engage here. So I can speak for DAS and DAS alone and, and I do have money set aside to update the Capitol Mall master plan. And so I know that the coordination plan, it's a kind of a separate effort, but I would be willing, we could do both those simultaneously, because other agencies won't necessarily be doing the Salem coordination plan. That could be something we could do altogether. But the Capitol master plan, if we could work the project from start to finish, we could actually develop a scope of work and what we need to do a capital plan and that would be documented. And then a really simple way, Daniel, we haven't talked about this, but as opposed to doing like a enterprise contract, we could just set it up to where other agencies could do it internal and IAA, where we would do the contracting for them, put them with that same architecture firm and then they could pay for that capital plan. So what we would need to do though, is the reason I would like to do one for DAS first, is we can then estimate the cost for a capital plan, so that we could work with the, the remainder ODOS and Oregon Department of Forestry and so on and so forth, and put in a budget request, assist them in what that budget request would be for an upcoming biennium. And then they would have funding in place to, to work their capital plan. So that would be a 27, 29 request, so we would have a couple of years, we could build out DASs and then we could start working on the other agencies if you guys felt as if that would work.
I think that's a good idea, Jeremy, and that raised one of Jim, I think your concerns are how are the agencies going to know? I think that's a good idea, Jeremy. And that raised one of Jim, I think your concerns are how are the agencies going to know, you know, what to budget and are they going to be provided the resources to do that work? So I think that's great to have a consistent contractor providing the work for the different agencies on the area plans.
Yeah. And then we would be able to work with, we'd be able to partner with the agencies and work with CFO and kind of help highlight what funding they would need to be able to do this body of work.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great. So Daniel, Daniel and I have been working in the shadows. And heavy on the Daniel, he's put together a really pretty hefty approach to how we could go about doing a capital plan. And so that could be something that we could refine a little bit and have prepared for an upcoming meeting and kind of show the steps that we see. And then the next step after that would be bringing in a, a firm that would assist us. And if you guys would all like to, you know, we can build out that project plan, but I could see the architects coming to a meeting such as this with a list of questions like, hey, we'd like your input on this. What would you like to see in this part of the capital plan? And we can start substantiating, you know, the criteria and, and the strategy we want to use in these plans.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Cool. Yeah. I mean, we have talked about this a little bit, but not much. And the fact is, you know, the work plan is we're just at this point where now it's, if we're teeing this off as a, as the next thing. So yeah, if we can make this materialize, that'd be great as a project plan. And then we can get into the nitty gritty of it. But so that's kind of where we're at. Don't. Yeah, that's, that's where we're at in terms of our work plan. We don't have any currently any projects to review that's in the hopper. So, yeah, we can come back next meeting, which I think would be a quarterly meeting. So that'd be June or July.
Things on our agenda may second.
I, 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 I held that meeting because in case we have a project that needs to be reviewed for the CPAP project process, but if that doesn't happen, then we can cancel that meeting and just have a quarterly meeting and they'll give us more time to kind of pull together a little bit more info and substance for us to, to talk about this next step, but
Sounds good.
That sound good? Okay.
Yeah. You have a question?
Yeah.
General question. So I'm representing this group on the art selection for the Capitol Committee. Which I can report back that it continues to both be one of the more complicated groups I've ever been involved with because of, you're talking about art. But it does, it did raise a question for me and you can probably answer this right off the top of your head, but when I started on that group, our budget was going to be spending about $200,000 to $300,000 on art. The current budget for art is over three million.
Oh, wow.
Yes. Which is quite a different world. And the entire thing has shifted, changed, different people running it. But it did kind of cause me to think about our stuff and say, it, and, and it is not treated as a part of the Capitol seismic upgrade, seismic upgrade. It's, it is a separate thing. It's a fun, because it's part of the half percent for art kind of thing. It's accumulating. The money accumulates. And so now I kind of sit back sometimes and think, is this something that we would naturally have come through us, even though it, it wouldn't have been intended to be that way when we first started it. But it's a $3 million thing that's both inside and outside the building. And it's a lot more complicated when you put an extra zero on things. Especially related to that project.
Okay. This is about art that goes on the Capitol building?
Part of the, yes.
Inside and out.
Inside and out.
We'd have purview of her, wouldn't it be the grounds? If it was on the grounds?
Yeah, that we, we added something about a provision about art because
I know.
That up last time.
No, because I, and now it's here. Yeah. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trolling for work for us. They have no idea that it might be triggered to have us a review by somebody else.
They probably
It would be highly complicated to have a review. I can say that as a
Wouldn't it be some over a million dollars?
It's, it's definitely going to be over, well, so
Your budget's over a million, I understand, but if the one proposed art installation is under a million, I don't think it comes to us, does it, Daniel?
Well, the budget for the project is, you know, this is why I'm bringing it up because it's
It's a percentage of the overall project, right?
Right.
About three million.
Right.
Yeah.
Percent for art, I think is what they call it.
Right.
We, we put public art as a minor improvement.
Topic.
It's, I, I'm not trying to stir it up, but I want to make sure that we, or at least, I mean, partially because I sit on the group representing us. I thought I better report back and also, and I'm, and I frankly, I'm not trying to, when, when I'm in there, there's a lot of subject area experts and there's plenty of people representing the state's needs that are inside the group.
Daniel, are you reading your chat?
No, I'm reading the statute or rule.
Laurie said your chat. He put that
Also, I would just also comment to Jim, for your sake, that there's another layer of any of the art that goes outside. If you can see it from the street, we consider it subject to our sign.
Yeah. And I think they're aware of that. I, I know that from my Willamette days, so I was, I've been attentive to that. I think the, I, I mean, the places where it will show up outside are now not in the most for instance, one of the ideas was that there would be art on the State Street frontage. So, you know, where the ramping is, and I think that's now lost, but there may be art on the Court Street frontage. Is that right? The other side?
Yeah, the side is Court Street.
But a whole bunch of that money is going to get spent inside and it's enough money now that, you know, we're going to see interpretive this and all kinds of, but it, but it is, I, I guess the, the one point I just wanted to kind of ask, and it goes to Shane's point too. If the budget is three million, but the only piece of it that affects us might be less than a million. Is it only because it's a part of the, a minor plan change? Or is it, is it triggered by the amount of money that the whole project is? And it, I used to think that it, well, it's just inside the Capitol seismic project, but it isn't. It actually has to attach to it.
I would think it would be, and I'm, I'm no Daniel's reading the statute, so I'm killing some time here, but I would guess that it's not the, based on the value of the total amount allocated for art for the Capitol, but if it's a piece that's out on a ground, proposed piece, if that piece is over a million dollars, that one piece, then that would come to us for review. That's how I
Yeah. It would be as a project if it was over a million, but it's a minor, it's considered a minor improvement. So the review, I guess, criteria is a little more thin and
Yeah.
And as far as like shippo and all that, that's on them, on the proposer to comply with that. Your interest in that is whether or not they have complied. And same thing with like, you know, all the land use requirements. So in terms of purview though, yours is, your purview is, is does it as a minor improvement fit within the context of the area plan as it's written currently?
Yeah.
And
And I'm sure it would. I, but I'm just mostly asking, would we need to trigger that it comes through us, even though they would not even be expecting this, you know?
In the past, Daniel, we've always based it on the total project cost. So it's 300 million at 1%. Just doing rough math there, but if we, we presented the CPC as DAS in the past, if we had a significant change or we were adding something to the exterior of the facility, the project qualifies for over one million, we'd have to come back for round two to the CPC. So just like at the exec building, when we determined that we were going to remove some trees and we were going to change the facade of a building, we came back a second time. So I don't see how the Capitol wouldn't need to come back. That's my interpretation.
So did they, the Capitol, Capitol is kind of an interesting thing.
None of it's really
It never came to the CPC, but that was before I was administering this. But yeah, that was another. So it actually hasn't been reviewed.
We're going to have to issue a stopper quarter anyway, so it doesn't matter.
So I want to follow up Jeremy with you. So with that line of logic, we should have had purview of any interior design changes in the Supreme Court building, for example.
Not in the interior, the exterior.
No.
See, most of this art is going to be exterior.
Yeah, I think he said exterior, it extends exterior and it's all
Some, it, nothing's decided. I mean, we're still in the process of accepting proposals, but there will be proposals that'll come for outside. There are areas that the project kind of designates as potential art installation sites. Some are indoors, some are outdoors. And I'm not, again, I'm just mostly wanting to make sure that we're on even ground here because, because the whole project has some exterior things, but we're not, we haven't been involved in that.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying, I mean, the whole Capitol project that, and so to turn to them now and say, this would come here, may or may not be what we want to do, but I'm just
Exterior and it's the total project is over a million dollars, then it, 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 it is, but we don't have purview over the, the interior part of it. But if it's all one contiguous project with one price tag, I think as a matter of interpretation, yeah. I, I mean, if there's a part of it that's outside, then that's sort of wrapped up in one for project, regardless of whether or not 75% of it maybe is inside. I don't know.
Okay, easily.
And, and what is outside could potentially affect traffic flow, like think of the World War II memorial with seating and spaces set up to potentially have events.
Yeah.
Which is very different than just painting the wall.
Just based on what I know, I doubt that will be an issue, but there are places, the decks, the you know, if you've hung out as a legislator, there's places that are, that people go and these are in some, these are some of the exterior things that are still inside the footprint of the park, so to speak. But I'm, I'll, I'll just, next meeting, I'll be listening in. We're still moving towards things coming from idea to proposal. Meaning artists are being solicited for different areas to put together ideas.
And if they
Definitely just keep us in the loop.
Yeah.
I think dating this every meeting and, you know.
Yeah. Then we'll decide.
Yeah.
You were going to say?
I was thinking if that, you know, if the $3 million was spent over 20 different items, you know, a painting here, a statue there, then each one by itself may be below the threshold and
Well, that's why we're kind of determining is, is it looked on as the whole thing? Cause when we started, this wouldn't have even, I mean, again, two or 300,000, we were, which is at that time was a lot of money for art.
Yeah.
Now it's a whole different category of money.
Yeah. I mean, I think Yeah. I guess how, when we were talking about initially, I was thinking maybe like some fountain or something like that, but it sounds like it's a little more
No, it got big.
Yeah.
It got
You know, we, we just, we just placed it in the minor improvement category.
Yeah.
So it's not like a, it's sort of a cursory review, but it isn't like, let's review it on its artistic merits.
Yeah.
It's their job.
Exactly. That's what the commission, that's what the group does.
It's really just, does it, is it fit within the context of the plan?
Right, right.
That's my, my interpretation of that.
So Daniel, this is, this is where the confusion comes from agencies to include myself. Is if it's a project over a million dollars, it, it's not saying if the art is over a million, it's, it's, it's the project, the whole. So any project over greater than a million dollars, you can go to CPC and say, we're doing no exterior renovations. And that's, that's super simple. But if we just change the facade of a building or we're changing the landscape, I would assume putting my seat, myself in the mayor's seat, I'd want to know what statue they're putting out by the road because the city of Salem may not want some particular piece of art, but that's, that's where we need, in my opinion, have a little bit of rigidity about when people have to present because that takes the confusion out for the other agencies. And they know when to come forward.
You know, that statue that's out in front of, I think it's judicial on State Street with the headless women.
Yeah.
That would need review, would have needed review.
I wasn't here yet.
So Jim, you're going to keep us in the loop?
I will. I'll report back after. Yes.
Okay. Daniel, could you read the comment that came in from Laurie? I don't see it on the screen. Was that relevant to what we're talking about?
She asked, Lori, I'm summarizing for you here. Would any art plan for the Capitol Mall have to be approved through shippo? And I assume she's asking because she works for parks, parks, shippos and parks. I would assume that, yeah, there's all these kind of regulatory requirements and that need to be abided by, but it's on the proposer's responsibility. We're just one of those kind of red tape entities that yeah, who don't control the, 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 the whole thing. So
And there's a representative from there on the group.
Okay.
I mean, there's, believe me, they got a ton of people in there now.
Thoroughly vetted.
Yes.
Great. So did that answer Laurie's question? I know she can hear us.
She's typing.
Okay.
I see bubbles. Oh, no.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm still learning though. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We're all learning the process, Lori. So I, I, I think we try to address some of these in the rule. I know that in execution is still going to be some interpretive things, whether or not man, I think if I'm getting, understanding you correct, Jeremy, you're saying that if an art installation is proposed as part of a capital project, that may be the entirety of the project, say like executive building remodel, and there's an art component to it, that that would be triggering for that, or you're talking about just the art installation itself being a million dollars, has to be reviewed.
No, it's, art's always going to be difficult. Art is the best part of any major project. So when, when, when an agency comes to the CPC, it's going to be in the infancy of the project or the project's just, just getting started. They're going to be able to show you the landscape plan. They're going to be able to show you the facade of the building, all the things that CPC cares about. The issue, and we're seeing it right now at the Capitol, is the art won't even start being developed until you're about 50, 60% into a project. So nobody will ever be able to say, hey, CPC, this is where we're intending to put art on a project because nobody's talking about it at the beginning. But according to the statute, any project over a million dollars has to have CPC approval. So there will always have to be a second visit if the art is going to be on the exterior of the building because you won't know until like at the North Valley complex, that is a $90 million contract we're finishing up. We have no art on site. It was just determined what art it will be. And we're going to the permitting, permitting with the city of Wilsonville currently. So art is going to be about a year behind the building construction. So there's always going to be a change to the outside if the art goes on the outside of the building. But they won't be able to share what that is until way late in the game.
Okay. I understand that. But we, yes, that makes sense. And but the thing is, we, we intentionally made that second round or that art review type of thing, a minor improvement. So it's a little less rigorous, but yeah, you would have to come back to have it looked at separately, since it's a separate fixture that is not exempt. We made, there's exemptions and there's non exemptions. Since it's not exempt, that has to be reviewed, but it's just a, it's a less rigorous review. So yeah, it's a second trip to the, the, the commission, but it just provides more and more specifics. And I think overall, the approach to the administrative rule update was to provide almost, I can see reoccurring or updates to projects as opposed to just a one-time review that if there was a purpose for them to come back to kind of provide further detail. That was kind of the expectation of the commission.
Go ahead.
A question. Thank you, Mayor. The review of the seismic upgrade and all the changes of the Capitol didn't come before CPC, correct?
Correct.
So if they, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate. If we, we poke the bear on this and want to review their art and they come back and say, hey, we didn't even go in front of you for the seismic, all the work that's being done on the Capitol, why should we come back to you to review the art?
I guess my response would be, well, one, the statute was in hiatus at that time. So the process was in hiatus and now it's not. I guess my response would be, well, one, the statute was in hiatus at that time, so the process was in hiatus and now it's not. And. They, they invited us to the art process, right? We didn't impose ourselves into the art process.
No, they invited us.
Yeah, they invited us. So we're not, we're not the ones saying you gotta. They, they invited us in, so.
But that inviting as a stakeholder does not, uh. Supplyant the need to. Actually. Present to the, the commission as a whole.
Right, no.
You're just, you're just a part of the process, but they, there's also, we have our own processes.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, even though you're involved, it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm there doing exactly what we're doing right now. I mean, I'm not in there to try and pick art. I mean, they have a. They have a all around the state commission to. Pull together the Congress of art pickers.
So if you guys would like, I have a really good relationship with the project manager, Jody Jones over there, and if. If, if we want to evaluate what exterior improvements in art they're going to do, I'm sure that I could have a conversation with her and. Just kind of make it to where it's not uncomfortable.
There's nothing, there, yeah, if, if I've been giving any impression that there'd be a problem with them, I don't think so. I just think this would come sideways to them at this moment because everybody's so. I mean, they're busy on the art. And. Not the process.
That makes sense. Uh, I think. Uh. In terms of administering this, there's still this problem where we have these. Uh, I want to say they're agencies, but we have these entities that are covered under this, but are not really part of the. Communication stream per se, because they're not, so you have judicial, there are separate branches.
Right.
They are by their location, subject to CPC review, but.
Subject to law.
Well.
Regardless of what branch they're in.
Yeah, no, they're, they are subject to review, but. Somehow I think there's this sense of economy that. There's. It's not getting across the need to do that. And I, I think that we need to, part of this is, is. Develop relationships and connectivity there and, uh.
Yeah.
And. Reaffirm that there's an expectation that. Is in statute, but just in general, it's station, expectation that, uh, you need to present and, um. You are subject to this review. So.
Right.
But the minor review would just go in front of you guys, right, Jeremy and Daniel?
No, minor review would go to the, um, the full commission, but it's just, we just ask for less stuff. Uh, and, yes. It's, so. Um.
Okay.
I mean, you have to have a certain amount of things to even have something to review. So, but that's the. Uh, it's not. Super, um, extensive, so.
Well, that might be one of the things that we talk about maybe on a future agenda item is how do we. Who and how are we going to remind state government that we are here? And that there's a process. I mean, and that might be the you as the department's responsibility. I don't know if it's our responsibility as the commission. But we should probably maybe figure that out. So we don't end up in comfortable situations. So everybody just knows upfront and there's no surprise.
Yeah, I, I. I agree. I think that there's, there's work to be done there. I think. The, my sort of priority has been getting the agencies in a place where they, uh. You know, they, they know what the process is and the expectation is. It's, um. I think that judicial was rattled enough by the circumstances around the Supreme Court building that they are. Um, pretty compliant, uh, at this point, but, um, yeah, if, if we can get an update from. The ledge folks about the Capitol.
That'd be.
That would be great if a presentation, but, um, so may, yeah, Jeremy, if you can do some, uh.
Uh, it's a big project.
That'd be great.
No, absolutely. And as far as communicating with, uh, legislation and all the agencies, that's. I kind of feel like that's going to be something that I'm going to take on. We have a really good deputy director and directors network that we're really getting engaged with, uh. Their director, Barry Leslie, and we can pass information. Everybody is really wanting to know what to do and when to do it and how to do it. So we'll come up with kind of a marketing campaign and share it with the group and, and get everybody's approval and then we'll take that forward. If that sounds like a good point.
It does. Strawberry shortcake in June, everybody. Item two a little.
Well, that's why I wanted to be a part of this was building those relationships because it was a gap that I've noticed over the last few years and. Just communicating and knowing what expectations are because everybody that I work with that are planning projects, they want to. They want to make the right steps and, and communicate with the correct people. They just simply don't necessarily know when. So I used to be the guy that would call Daniel when he was the CFO and be like, I'm putting a fence up. Do I have to talk to you? And he'd say yay or nay, and that's, that's the way Daniel and I got to know each other.
Yeah, we want to eliminate, but need to do that hopefully. That's not going to totally go away, but I think, you know.
Right.
Giving people clear instruction has, uh, been the goal of this and. I think simply because the rules were so jacked up, uh, it was a little hard to. Insert them for people, but.
Right.
So. I hope we feel that that's progress.
Follow up on a conversation with last time about the two vacancies for the House and the Senate.
We were talking.
Texting at the time.
Yeah, we were talking about that before you came in.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and it was unfortunate timing and I'm going to follow up now with the new speaker. I have a closer rapport with her. And I'm hoping to, but no, I have not, we have not made any progress yet.
Yeah.
It was like literally like the day before he announced he was leaving. And so it was really. He had other things on his mind. Let me just say that. And so I'm hopeful now that we'll be able to get someone.
Great. I mean, it's, it's been vague for a long time, uh.
Probably low priority for them. I don't think they even.
It's extremely low.
Yeah. They're not voting members, so it's not technically, uh, an issue for us conducting business, but I think, you know, if we're going to tee up a. A process for updating the Capitol Mall plan, uh, it'd be nice to have those folks.
Yeah.
At least part.
I would love it if the speaker would designate like Brett Haynes, like. He, if he was, you know, if he were sitting here, he's like the facility manager, basically. Like he would be the perfect person. He's obvious.
As a designee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of a member. Like he would be the, because he's. Well, nonpartisan, he's just running the building, you know, he's making all this stuff happen.
I'll put the second position, any ideas for that?
Yeah. I know, but I. Yeah, so anyway, I will try again.
That'd be appreciated. Yeah. Okay.
All right, well, we have the next forty minutes for public comment. I think we'll just sit here and wait and see if any public shows up. Does that sound good?
Or about.
No.
Or not.
We have two guests on.
Or we could just go. Um, unless there's. Is there all staff members online, right? With this, this.
Shane is a guest.
Tell Shane to med, oh, she's not, she's a member.
It says guest. Well, not a guest yet. Okay.
She's a member.
Yeah.
So do we have, if we don't have any members to public present to comment?
No.
Great. So anything else on, for the good of the order?
Nothing else on the agenda?
Great. All right, we're adjourned and Daniel, you will let us know on our next meeting.
Yes.
Great.
If it's May, I'll, I'll, you'll know about it. If not, we'll, we'll punt until the next quarterly meeting and.
So May is being held on my calendar. I would love to be able to free that up if it's actually free.
I already deleted off my calendar.
Nice.
I'll put it.
I would not be allowed to do that till I get some green light from Daniel.
Right.
Well, we. We, we made a commitment to reviewing things prior to going to CPAD. That was the big. Effort, so we want to make sure we, we're creating space for that to happen before the agencies possess.
Okay.
I'm just holding it. We're just holding it for right now, but, um.
Today's the, okay, when will you make a decision on that?
Well, I need to. Two weeks before the meeting.
There you go. So by the fifteenth. Or seventeenth, maybe not.
On the calendar, that is, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
We're adjourned.
Guys.
Bye. You, Jer.